Meeting to order, please.
Okay.
Let's bring this meeting to order, please, at seven.
What do you have, Rob?
Seven o'clock.
Yep.
And please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the Pride of the United States of America. A republic for which its stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, somebody's acting. I out. Okay. Deputy Clerk, Alleeja, would you please call the roll?
Okay, Supervisor Carrie.
Present.
Treasurer Yeaple.
Present.
Clerk Flintoff, absent. Trustee Brant.
Uh, here.
Trustee Noel.
Here.
Trustee Reed, absent. Trustee Riser.
Present.
And also joining us is Township Attorney Mariah Think and Township Manager Kristi Eagan. Now it's time for adoption of the agenda. Do we have any changes? Recommended changes?
I would propose to move the approval of the architect for fire station two into consent and the approval of the construction manager with Cunningham Limp Firm Manager Risk for Fire Station number two also into the consent agenda. And to the extent we need a short presentation, that could be part of that consent agenda would have the also effect of getting the chief on much sooner in the evening.
I would support that.
Well, I would support the first one, but not the second. I have a question about it. So I guess what?
But can't we?
Should we?
Can't we? Can't we have questions during the consent agenda? When we, when we move the consent agenda and there's a second, we could have a discussion about that particular item then, if it's just a question. If it's not going to be protected, if it's not likely to be a protected discussion or debate, I would suggest we do it during consent, but I'm flexible on this.
Well, okay, consent is. Consent is just a sweeping vote. We shouldn't have discussion?
Well, we can, we move and we second and then we vote. I think consent agenda can have some discussion. I real, I agree that it shouldn't go in depth on something where there's pro and con and move amendments and things like that. But if it's just a question for the chief, he could likely handle it during that consent discussion and then we vote on it. That is what I would propose. If I don't have support for both, I, I can live with that, too.
We've never done it that way before.
Right, that's.
Okay, I tried.
You being, let's, will we be okay with the first part, the architecture?
Yes.
Anything else that direction? So, as Mr. Riser, your, your architecture one moved.
Okay, no, I.
Okay.
That's fine.
And is that supported by Yeaple?
Yes.
So for this, should we vote on this alone and then any other changes vote separately? If there are any?
I have, I have one to add on for an invoice from Chiefhood for repairs that have already been done. We just need to pay the invoice to Phoenix, a repair to the station garage.
I would support that.
Under consent?
I would also, I would.
Under consent, yes.
Yeah, I would. Support, yeah. I would move it or I would second Ryan if he's moving it, however we get it there.
Contracting, okay. See, let's see, was there? The, just some clarification before we vote and where did they go? So in the Dexter Ann Arbor, under consent, the Dexter Ann Arbor run, there's a typo in the beginning. It's, it's Sunday, June 1st, 2025, not Sunday, June 3rd, 2023. But that, that's only in the, the agenda item, not in the, the rest of it. And 1.8. Oh, and the, the blanket purchase for Print Tech to provide postage and printing, that was, we had some issues with that earlier. We had one agenda item and two agenda items. Now it's back to one, but we, we have the correct GL numbers. So that is good to go and you should have received a copy of that at one point. And I think that's it as far as I had. Anyone else?
And just a point of information, is the, the added item going to be with respect to Phoenix contracting for the fire department barn? Will that go under I-21?
Sure.
Phoenix.
See. Okay. So we have a, a motion for the consent items or to adding to the consent, do we have a motion to approve the adoption of the agenda?
I move we adopt the consent agenda as modified by our discussion.
And did you hear that? It, Christine Noel's second?
I heard it, yes.
Oh, you heard, okay. Well, for their, for the notes here.
You weren't talking to me.
Okay, um. I guess a voice vote or do we need a?
I would do a roll call.
Okay, let's do it.
No, no, we're not, we're not approving it. We're disapproving, we're not approving the, and we're disapproving.
The amendment, the adoption.
The adoption.
That's, oh, let's just do a voice. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? None, motion passes. Five, five to zero. Yeah, because we're missing two. There's too many people. It appears confusing. Okay, moving on, communications to the Board of Trustees.
Point of order, is it, we have staff here for items that are now, that were on consent. Can, nothing was told that the utility director asked, can he be excused now that it's my, our job to sit, you know?
Sure, yeah. Yeah, thank you. Have a good night.
Thanks, I'm sorry.
He can't leave, though.
He's not, he's.
Okay.
Good night kiss.
All right. Moving on to communications to the Board of Trustees. Any questions?
The chief didn't raise a minute, I don't know.
Okay. All right. Next is public comments. This is the time for members of the public to speak up to five minutes on any matter under the purview of the Board of Trustees. Anyone present would like to speak? If so, come up to the table, please. Yes, not. Kristi, anyone online?
Yes, we have one hand raised. Rob Pattinson. Go ahead, Rob.
Thank you, Rob Pattinson, Scioto Township President. On page 21 of the March 11th board meeting minutes, Clerk Flintoff said, "That data used by the Compensation Commission varied by position and that the determination for the supervisor's salary was disproportionate and lacks sufficient justification. I believe that is an incorrect statement. The Compensation Commission used the exact same data for all positions, for all positions. The Commission was comprised of professional and successful residents with over 200 years of combined work experience. Saying they were wrong with one recommendation while accepting three others is another demonstration of the hypocrisy I've seen on this board. Once again, I call on this board to reject the raises in an effort to recover some of your credibility. Thank you Treasurer Yeaple and Trustee Brant for offering to do just that. Saying it is one thing, please put it in writing to make it official. This board just passed a budget that is not balanced because you have ignored the fact that the HVAC system projected across this township, $390,000, is now going to be 1.6 to 1.8 million dollars. Clerk Flintoff said the professionals haven't told you different and that you have a responsibility to take care of the building at the March 11th meeting. I submit that it's time for you to ask the professionals what their suggestions are and ask them to find a better solution. I submit the geothermal is now off the table because it isn't affordable. That was a luxury we could afford last year that is now nearly five times more expensive than estimated. That alone should be ringing alarm bells on this board and cause you to take action. Stating that the professionals haven't said anything is not the right response to this urgent issue. I would also submit that taking care of employees should be higher on your priority list than taking care of the building. The hypocrisy and flat-out unfairness of voting yourselves a raise while denying employees is the exact thing that will assure resentment builds in this township building. Willingness to blindly spend 1.6 million dollars on the HVAC and deny $13,000 in raises will also build resentment. That is not good leadership. And you still aren't paying interim, the interim manager what you should be. Two weeks ago, you made a huge point that all temporary managerial duties assigned to the supervisor have been removed so you don't have to give her a raise. Those duties have been assigned to Kristi Aiken. You can't talk out of both sides of your mouth and say one person doesn't deserve a raise because her duties have been removed and say that another person doesn't deserve a raise because you have increased her duties. If you're going to deny the supervisor a raise based on that logic, then you must give that raise to Kristi Aiken. Please do so as soon as possible and backdate it to the time you assigned her all the extra duties. There have been five versions of tonight's agenda packet. That is common over the last couple of years. Thursday, it was 319 pages. Friday, 31 pages were added of correspondence and something else. Saturday, two pages were added in reports. Monday, something was added, but the PDF was corrupted. And then Tuesday, today, 12 pages were added. I don't know where. Several hundred-page agenda packets are always posted. Trying to read it is difficult when the pages are added somewhere in the document. This should be added to the Rules of Order discussion. I asked about the issue at the beginning of the last Rules of Order meeting and it wasn't addressed there and there are no more meetings scheduled. If addition, excuse me, if additions will continue to be made to the agenda packet, then the additions should be itemized somewhere on the Table of Contents page. Trustee Brant, two weeks ago, I asked you to explain why you didn't propose the motion you wrote. You refused to answer the question. Before last week's Rules of Order meeting, I asked you if you were going to respond. You said you would not. I urge you to explain your actions to your colleagues and to residents. A lot of damage has been done on this board and being upfront and honest will go a long way towards helping everyone understand where you are coming from. Not doing so just leaves us to speculate and that is not helpful. You condemn the previous board for not being honest and transparent. You must apply the same standard to yourself that you applied to the previous board. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob.
Thank you, Rob.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak at public comment? Please raise your Zoom hand. I see no other hands raised.
Okay, moving on to approval of the minutes.
I will move to approve the minutes as submitted for the March 11th meeting, regular meeting.
I'd like your support.
Okay. I guess voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? None? Motion passes, five to zero? Okay, on to consent agenda. And, okay.
I move the consent agenda and I'd ask for a roll call vote because it's money.
I would support.
And wouldn't that be as amended?
As, yep, yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Just for the records.
Appreciate it.
Voice vote, deputy clerk? Or roll call vote, I mean, one of those votes.
For rules of order, we'll be starting with Noel tonight. Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Trustee Reed, absent. Trustee Riser?
Yes.
Supervisor Carrie?
Yes.
Treasurer Yeaple?
Yes.
Flintoff, absent. Trustee Brant?
Yes.
Motion passes?
Five to zero.
Or, yes, minutes approved, five to, or consent agenda approved, five to zero, yes, as amended. Reports. It is a lot of consent agenda items. Any, any discussion about reports? Anybody have a report they wanted to verbally?
I have an issue that we need to discuss.
Okay.
Which is the scheduling of the meeting on PFAS. This will be scheduling with the M Part and Eagle and some other people. So I, I have talked to Kristen from Washtenaw County Health Department. I have talked to Carrie Rangens, state rep. She wants to be informed of it, the date we pick. I've talked to people from Eagle. I've submitted five or six possible options to several board members, Jessica and Gillian. And I've narrowed it down. Then want to make a proposal for a date so we can set the date and I can begin to inform other people and they can begin to plan their presentation. So the date that is looking the best for the most people is April 29th, which is a Tuesday. It is not a board meeting date.
What time are you proposing?
I'm proposing either 6:00 PM or 7:00 PM. I wanted to see what people wanted. If we start at 6, we'll get done earlier.
Well, we, we have enough to call a special meeting.
We do.
If we all agree at this April 29th at 6, I mind 6.
You'd be fine it?
I'd be fine with that.
What about everybody else?
Well, he, trustee Riser just stepped out, so he'll be back.
Fine for me.
Fine for you, Ryan?
Fine with me.
Well, you have to be here.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Does Mariah need to attend? I don't think so, but what do you think? I don't think you need to be there on the 29th, but it's up to you. It's this PFAS presentation. I do not need to be there. I don't think so.
No, not yet. Maybe there's a, something down the road, possibly, but.
Well.
Well, let's wait.
Do we want to hear if anyone else has a report and come back to that?
Yeah, let's do that.
Keith, you want to come up and talk for a minute or two?
Code, yes, code enforcement officer Keith Dijwan, please.
Good evening.
Hello.
I keep telling myself not to say Deputy Keith Dijwan. I used to saying that at the meetings that I was presenting to him. I am doing your first code enforcement report of my career here for Scioto Township. It's quite short, as I started this last month. So I'm only covering the months of January and February of 2025. We had four complaints that came in in January and ten that came in in February. Of those, five remained open. So a total here to date of 14 complaints we received. Some things to note that I have complicated three signs that have been posted in the right of way during that time. I'll tell you that this month has been a lot more productive. I'm not going to give you those numbers yet because it's not over. The enforcement actions in the context are continuing, continuing for the 23 and 24 complaints. I have several of those in the files that I am going through and wanted at the time trying to work through those. I did issue one civil infraction, reference in the ongoing zoning violation in the 7,000 block of Jackson Road. And basically, my time last month was spent going over the ordinances, seeing how we can improve some, maybe some that we need to enact. And then also going through all the files and seeing just what kind of complaints we're receiving and how those can be handled over the future ones. So, and I have been working on trying to streamline the complaint process using digital files and a different type of data collection. I hope to give the board a presentation on that in the near future on how that can benefit not only my actions, but the board as well and, and how they can access that information whenever they see fit. So that's basically all I have for this report. Are there any questions or comments or anything I can?
Keith, I have a question. Could you explain the codes for how the report, how the incidents are reported? For example, FD, TX, FOP?
Yeah, so how received, unknown. Of course, I didn't know how it came in. We have online email. That would be the fire department that would come in from there. A TX would be a telephone complaint. FOP would be found on patrol. So basically, I'm not just around doing whatever, working on other complaints and I actually observe the violation myself. And I can change those terminologies as just what I've used in the past.
It's fine.
But I could also include a key at the bottom of that.
Be awesome.
Yeah, definitely.
You're doing a great job.
Yeah.
It's funny, we ran into each other today.
A couple of times.
Yeah.
You gotta sign out.
Yeah, no.
Beautiful for treasure.
Yeah.
Anything else?
I have a quick question. Scioto Ridge sidewalks not being cleared.
Yes, so we did have an online, I believe that was a online complaint.
Yeah.
A subject that walks along that section of roadway said that a lot of sidewalks were not being cleared. That was basically one instance before I took over and that had rectified itself with the weather. But what I found is that a lot of those homes down through there, they actually have a sidewalk in the front of their house and then on the backside along Scioto Ridge, they also have a sidewalk back there that's not a common sidewalk to an HOA or condo association. So they would also be included in making sure that that sidewalk is clean.
Oh.
My intentions are to make contacts with these folks and also all the businesses along there because we want to make sure that our seniors and our ADA residents have a good, clean, safe path to walk on in the wintertime. And that's going to be achieved by addressing HOA associations, businesses. And then if I have to go door to door along that section that has two sidewalks and try to talk to the residents there, that's what I'm going to do. But that's kind of pushed off at this point until later in the year.
A significant part of Scioto Ridge doesn't have sidewalks.
There are sections that do and don't.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's, it's clear in the ordinance that the sidewalks must be cleared and each owner of the property needs to make sure that that's being done within the time of fashion. I believe that said 6:00 PM on the following day, if I remember correctly.
So, you know, Scioto Ridge is a long windy road and it kind of starts where Liberty Athletic Club is and there's a, the U-Haul rental, the storage rental, and then there's the, the back of the, of, of that gravel pit or there, there's that. And then there's, you know, then there's the condos, there's Walnut Glen and Walnut Ridge, and then there's, and then it, and then it, I don't know, some of it might also be adjacent to the uplands. But then it goes into the Meadowlands and the ravines and the ravines has a contract to, to, to have a contractor shovel common area sidewalks. But then in each of the, in the ravines, each homeowner is responsible for their pursuant to the HOA and pursuant to the ordinance. So it's, it's, you know, I don't.
There's actually four associations that I identified that I will be contacting them.
All right, hometown might have a little sliver, too. Just a sliver. But, um. Yeah, so good luck with that and let me know if you need outreach and down there to the homeowners associations or any of the residents.
Thank you so much.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Keith.
See you later.
And welcome again.
Oh. Christine Noel, now we're back to trustee Riser.
John, we're.
April 29th, 6:00 PM?
Yes.
I would love to talk about PFAS.
Okay, so.
I'm down.
But it's good for you.
I'm down, yeah.
Okay, okay.
So do you?
We need a motion.
I'll make a motion to call a special meeting of the board, Scioto Board of Trustees for the specific purpose of receiving a presentation from experts on PFAS contamination. From Eagle. Okay.
Yes.
At 6:00 PM.
It'll be public. It'll be Zoom. And I'm if they want to present on Zoom, I think it's fine.
Sure.
Are you all okay with that?
Yeah.
I think it's fine. That'll save them some time.
Ryan, you want to?
Try, try to read that since like, yeah, okay. I'd make a motion to call a special meeting of the Scioto Township Board of Trustees on April, Tuesday, April 29th at 6:00 PM for the purpose of receiving a presentation from Eagle on PFAS contamination. That make sense?
Yes, it's good.
Yeah.
I'll support.
You have both of them? All right. Motion by Yeaple, support by Noel to call a special meeting.
Scioto Township Board of Trustees.
Yeah.
Tuesday.
Tuesday, April 29th at 6:00 PM to receive a present, a presentation from Eagle on PFAS contamination.
Thank you.
And I, let's do a, a roll call vote, please.
Noel?
Yes.
Reed, absent. Riser?
Yes.
Supervisor Carrie?
Yes.
Yeaple?
Yes.
Flintoff, absent. Brant?
Yes.
Motion passes, five to zero.
Wonderful, thank you. Anything else for reports?
Yes, the, just a reminder, the Planning Commission has a training session on Monday, March the 31st at 5:00 PM, right here. The topic is how to get the development you want.
3:31 at 5 here. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else?
Yes, it will. It's on, it's on the Scioto Township webpage. It's an actual item.
A meeting item, I mean. Can you hear us?
Okay.
Okay.
That does all, but, yeah. Learning experience.
Yeah, it's kind of strange. You have something in your face the whole time.
I'm wondering Kristi, if you could share we, you've sent an email multiple times to township employees about this issue, about delegation of duties issues. And just for clarity, because it sounds like there's some confusion with some of the comments we heard earlier, could you?
I don't know.
Either bring that list again to the next meeting or share it right now?
I can share it out in the morning.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
And Kristi, do you have anything for a report? It reminds, we haven't asked you and we normally.
No, she usually asks me.
Okay.
Gillian does.
Awesome, awesome.
How about a supervisor's report?
I will have one. Basically, just my statutory duties. So moving on, if, if there's nothing else about reports. How about, oh, no, public hearings, unfinished business. L1, Many Hands Life Sharing Community. Possible action for 0A, number 24001, ESP, number 24004. And this is being presented by, oh, Laura, Laura Kreps from Carlisle-Wartman, or planner.
Good evening, everybody.
Hi.
Hello.
So just a brief introduction. I know Tom and the team are there for, to answer any specific questions on the project, but this, this same item came before you at the last meeting and was postponed. Action. But this, this same item came before you at the last meeting and was postponed action to, I guess streamline or collaborate with the applicant on the conditions for preliminary PUD approval. We did that. The packet, the background information is generally the same. The motion is, has been modified based on the meeting we had and the agreement between the township officials that were there at that meeting and Carrie's team, Many Hands team. That's not to say that the model motion could not change, but that, that we have agreed upon those conditions. One item was added today. It was the conceptual plan that was shared by Mr. Covert. It's a one-page conceptual plan that demonstrates that the internal 200-foot setback from, from the structures to the community wastewater system drain field can be met. So that's meant just as, it's just conceptual. It is not something that OHM or Carlisle-Wartman has reviewed. But it demonstrates that that setback can be met, and it would be reviewed further during final PUD site plan consideration. And I'm happy to answer any questions you have, but I'll turn it over to the applicant.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Tom Covert with Midwestern Consulting here tonight with representatives of the Many Hands Life Sharing Community Board. As Laura had indicated, we did have the opportunity to meet with various township stakeholders and have discussion about the model motions. I thank everybody for that opportunity. And then since then, we did submit a concept. Again, just reiterate, it's a concept, new loops and buildings around in order to do a conflict, what we felt would be an option to meet that internal setback from one of the units and the buildings that we were proposing internally to that to the subject fields. So hopefully, that with the meeting allows our project to move forward and consider the motion that we have this week.
Thanks, Tom. Are there any questions or comments or?
I can, I just wanted to make a few comments. I was present at the internal meeting and I feel satisfied that this model motion, as it stands with the conditions, sufficiently meets the needs of Sio Township. It represents our residents. And there was give and take in the negotiation process. So I think Many Hands is satisfied with the decision.
And this is Kathleen Bray. And I was also in, in attendance. I appreciate your making a change to this. That makes it easier for me to vote yes for this. I just wanted to make a brief comment. I've noticed you changed some of the cottages, which appear to be closer to the property line, just subject to review by our engineers. That's all.
Treasurer Yable, do you have anything?
No.
Okay.
No, I'm going to support this, and I thank the people on this board that have taken the extra time to meet with them, to meet with the planning, to go on above and beyond. I appreciate you doing that to try to craft something that works for all of Sio as well as for Many Hands. And in that regard, I'm going to move the model motion in for support for that.
I'll support it.
Yes. Yeah, thank you to everyone. Planner Kreps, attorney Fink, and everyone that's worked on this. This is, I know it seems like a really long process and you're just beginning, but it's, I think this is going to be a welcome project and a, a need for our community. So the model motion is, the Board of Trustees finds the Many Hands Life Sharing Community preliminary PUD received by the township meets the qualifications for consideration as a PUD as outlined in Sections 36-249D, 36-245C, and 36-245A of the zoning ordinance and approves the preliminary PUD plan with the following conditions. Number one, at the earliest point that the state of Michigan or comparable entity will provide documentation, the applicant shall demonstrate licensure through the state of Michigan or comparable entity having such authority or provide documentation from the state of Michigan or such entity that licensure is not required. No certi-, no certificates of occupancy shall be issued until the license or documentation that licensure is not required has been received by the township. Number two, applicant shall revise the layout of the site to eliminate the need for a setback deviation from a structure within the development. Number three, applicant will comply with all requirements of the Sio Township Community Wastewater Utility System Ordinance 34-192. Number four, the trailhead depicted on the site plan shall be constructed and available to the public when the large northern parking lot is built or when Sio Township begins construction of the trail just north of the property, whichever comes first. Number five, no facility in the PUD except residential units shall be available for rent, rental by the public. Number C, number six, not C, but six. Applicant has offered preservation of the open space in the PUD without request to the township for land preservation funds. Applicant will cooperate with the township to execute and record any documents necessary for this preservation. Number seven, the deviation not to enclose the community wastewater utility system with a six-foot high fence is approved. Number eight, all out items outlined, the, the CWA report dated October 15th, 2024, and memo dated January 20th, 2025. A summary of the items will be provided to the applicant, but is not a substitute for the entire report. Number nine, all items outlined in the OHM report dated January 8th, 2025, a summary of the items will be provided to the applicant, but is not a substitute for the entire report.
So can I get a friendly amendment, like, all items will be addressed by the applicant? Will, I mean, it's really not a sentence. Eight, it's all items outlined in the CWA date report and memo dated January 20th will be addressed by the applicant? We're not saying what we want them to vote.
Okay. It's fragmented sentence, yes.
Or is that, is that just not necessary?
No, let's, I would support.
I mean, because we want them to address them.
Yeah.
So will be addressed by the applicant.
And the same for number nine?
Yes, please.
So all items outlined, the CWA report dated October 15th, 2024, and memo dated January 20th, 2025 will be addressed by the applicant?
Yes.
Yeah, that's good.
And then number nine, all out items outlined in the OHM report dated January 8th, 2025 will be addressed by the applicant?
And the memo. The OHM items are, are contained in the memo also.
OHM report and memo?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, yes, yes. Okay, I see what you're saying.
Memo dated January 20th, 2025.
Yeah, that was left out.
That would be friendly.
Okay, now is there?
I moved it.
For the amended.
Well, yeah, I think they were friendly amendments.
Friendly amendment, oh, okay, yes.
And then I think it was supported, and then I'm ready for a roll call vote or voice, whatever.
Support by Noel, okay, yes. Sure, roll call vote, please.
Me?
Yes, you.
I'm here, yeah. Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Reed, absent. Trustee Riser?
Yes.
Supervisor Carrie?
Yes.
Treasurer Yable?
Yes.
Bluntough, absent. Trustee Brandt?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Very much.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Bye, Laura.
Thank you, Laura. Oh, no, she's gonna, no, we've already passed the consent, so she's good. They have the child ordinance on there.
Sio Barn.
Is that, okay. Project Manager Chris Jane, hi, how are you?
Good, fine, thank you. Good evening, Board of Trustees.
Hello.
Good evening. And everything's crammed in down at the bottom here, so. Okay, all right. Yes, sorry about that. This is L2, possible action for the Sio Barn.
So at the beginning, or do you want to wait for trustee Riser?
Well, I, should we wait just a?
I don't think we can.
Let's start, let's begin the, the discussion, I guess, and then we'll.
Sounds good.
He's probably listening on his phone.
This has been in front of the board several times, so he probably has a little bit of the background information anyway on what's going on. So this is the barn that's located at the northwest corner of Sio Church and Wagner Road. It is currently being used as, you know, for storage for the Friends of Sio. They've been there for, I think, at least 20 years. It is, the lease is coming to an expiration, May 25th of this year, 2025, so it's within the next three months. That's why I'm bringing it forward, because we have options that we have to let them know at least 60 days in advance if we're not going to renew the lease, or they have to give us 90 days if they don't want to continue the lease, so. And some of the options that were previously brought to the board, and I can see several of you that visited the site with me, I think, sometime during the winter months, that they were going to re-roof it in exchange for extending their lease. We also explored possibly selling the, the barn. We have a real estate agent, I want to say, because there are not a lot of comparables for a vacant barn that wouldn't be able to be developed around $150,000, but that's speculative. We briefly looked into a historic district, which we decided that probably wasn't the direction the township wants to go in. And then finally, we've explored possibly using it for storage for some of the township staff and departments. So we're at the point now, since we're getting close to the expiration of the lease, we want to use this for storage. You know, there would be several, you know, conditions if we used it for storage for, for Sio Township. Some of that may be, we have to make sure that the ingress egress is safe, getting in and out of there with our equipment. We want to ensure that there's a proper turnaround for, because typically, all of this equipment are going to be large trucks with trailers with equipment on the back, so is there enough room to turn around in that area? And then, of course, we're probably going to have to replace that roof at some point. The last bid that we got, I think, was around $43,000, so that's what we're looking at if we're going to go with a metal roof out there. So this is, this essentially is a presentation to find out which direction, or do you have a preference? Do you want to either sell it, or are you looking at possibly using this for township departments? And I'm open to any questions you may have. Sure.
What, what do the Sio Flyers want?
A Sio Flyer, this is the. Siders were out in township, all right.
Okay, what do they want?
Well, if, if they had their brothers, they would like to, to remain. They have a lot of their, you know, equipment and whatnot that's in there for storage. They even put on the table that they would actually pay for the re-roofing. And then you could reduce, you know, it might be worth, I think, something like $5,000 a year. If you let them stay for eight years, they'd pay the $40,000 upfront. So they are willing to, to enter into a contract with the township and move forward that way.
And you've had dialogue with them?
Yes.
So that would be an eight-year contract?
Approximately. I mean, I'm sure everything's negotiable.
Trustee Noel, any, any other questions?
Not now.
Trustee Brandt?
Yes, I, I do have some comments. The board has talked extensively about the use of that property should have a public benefit. And also that the, the rent is not at market value in $5,000 a year. I don't believe is market value for that property. For that as a rental, I, I think you would be looking at somewhere between $600 to $1,000 per month to rent that space. It's quite, quite large. So is there, to date, I haven't heard this board be amenable to extending the lease. Do people have comments on them?
We haven't really discussed it much. I, so I'm, I'm on the fence about this one. I mean, I can see the pros and cons each way, but, I guess, I was reluctant to just take it away from the Friends of the Barn. Hey, have we given them any option to negotiate for higher rent or something? I mean.
We could, we could absolutely bring that up, and I'd be remiss to not mention that they have done some maintenance out there. They've been mowing the lawn, they painted the barn, so they, they have done some general maintenance out there. But no payment.
So I'm on the fence, but go on, see where the others are. Treasurer Yable?
I'd be supportive of it being used for a public purpose. Us having the barn rented to a private party, I don't think is in ultimately the best interest of the township. It's nothing, you know, it's an attack or a personal opinion. It's just a, hello? Just a, I think the best, best use for the public good is to have it used for a public purpose. Having, you know, it, it does appear that multiple departments within the township have expressed levels of interest in using it for storage. It still has a financial requirement, but several of the departments have additional funding sources other than our general funds. So I'm keeping that in mind at the back of my, my head too, when we're looking at the financial cost of it, because we could receive rent, we still have to have our insurance on it in addition to other insurance for the renters, so.
Trustee Riser?
At this point, it would be an action item tonight or just a discussion?
It can be an action item. I'm prepared to make a motion.
Subject action.
So, so, I, I appreciate that we could be getting ready for this, but it's a, it's a location without electricity, without water, without sewer, minimal parking, and maybe even ingress and egress. I drove by it today, went around the roundabout a couple of times, went down, looked at it. I don't think you can approach it from Sio Church. I, I don't think there's a, an entrance there. I think that you can only approach it from southbound Wagner Road. I don't know, I don't know if that's true or not true, but it looked, that, it looked like, it, it looks pretty limited because it's so close to the road. It's such a small parcel. There doesn't appear to be a lot of, a lot of parking. So when we say public purpose, do you mean we, we have put a picnic table up and the public could use it for picnics, or do you mean a, a, a purpose for the township hall to, to store equipment in it? Which, you know, and, and, you know, the Sio, the friend, the Friends of the Sio Barn, they do paint it. They do mow the lawn, they maintain the ground, so we do get some benefit from that. So I, I, I'm not predisposed one way or the other on this. I think the, there is a public benefit to having the barn there. If we sell it, if we, if we sold it to somebody, would we say, you got to keep it up as a barn? Or do you get to raise the barn and do whatever you want in that parcel and get water and sewer there, or put a subject there and put a little house by the road? So by public purpose, I'm curious if we mean township use or resident use. And I'm wondering if there, if, if it can serve multiple purposes, if it can serve the township's purpose with respect to vehicles and any 501(c)(3) or anybody who, who wants to have a role in the maintenance of the property and the maintenance of the barn. So that's, that's, those are my thoughts on that. Again, not, you know, leaning one way or the other, but open to what others have to say.
Okay. Well, I have questions about the public benefit of allowing an individual or individuals to use. There, there is no public benefit. When we, when we lease something, by law, we cannot lease it for less than the fair market value, because this is taxpayer-owned. And we, we cannot allow just one person to benefit or persons benefit from something that the taxpayers own. So I am opposed to the continued lease of this unless there is monetary fair market value. And going back to 20 years that we have leased it to them, and I, at one of the meetings, I asked them, what, what have you done to the building? And if they would have said, oh, And if they would have said, oh, um, yeah, we, we're going to put a roof on as well, well, that would have made a big difference. That was what, forty, between twenty-nine and forty-three thousand at that time, and everything they've done in the past, but. For twenty years, it, I think it equaled out to three hundred or six hundred a year or something like that. I may be off on that. I don't have that information in front of me. So if, we have options here. Number one, we keep it and we use it for storage for the township, just like we have, um, any other building. But that is taxpayer-owned, but a benefit to the public because we use it for storage for our equipment that benefits the public. Um, another option is to. Well, keep it, as I said, keep it in store, our own thing, um, um, uh, equipment in there. Number two, we could sell it and. Possibly if somebody wants to purchase it and that it was brought up before in the past about preservation and a hi- um, historical preservation, which I guess is quite lengthy, but it wouldn't be through the county. It would be our own. Um, condition, I suppose. Um, and the three, we could just continue to lease. Um, but with better terms. So we're kind of.
I'm, I'm prepared to make a motion, please. May I make a motion?
You may.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to not re- renew the lease for the Sial Township Barn. At the northwest corner of Sial Church and Wagner Road. To the Friends of Sial Pa- Barn, which is set to expire on May the twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five. Further to inform the Friends of Sial Barn that their property must be removed by the end of the lease period.
Is there support?
I'd support that.
Roll call vote, please.
What, what, now, now.
Want a discussion?
Now that we have a discussion.
Just for this.
No, no, of course, yeah. Um. And I, I, I would want to check with legal to make sure that if we're terminating the lease, that, um, notice be proper, and if there's a ninety-day notice requirements. Or whatever, then, um, I don't know, council has had the opportunity to, to look at the lease recently, but if we're, if either party is going to terminate the lease, there might be notice requirements, so. So that's what I would be concerned with, following that. Renoel? And I'm looking here on page six of eight, and I could provide it to you, council, if you want to see it.
That's on it.
Okay.
Thank you.
And, and it says, um, lease shall renew for twelve months upon a written request of the tenant, no later than ninety days, and then it shall indicate intent not to renew no later than sixty days. So I just want to make sure that, uh, council member Brant's, uh, motion comports with the terms of the lease. And if it does fine, and if not, then it'd be modified, uh, so as to comply with the lease, that's all.
I'd support that, I mean.
I mean, I mean.
In fairness.
I mean, if we're gonna, if we're gonna kick them out, let's do it within the terms of the agreement.
There be any will among other board members to at least direct Chris to explore negotiation? With the current people and see if they are willing to pay a higher rent?
Well, that's why I asked if it hadn't be done today. If, if this is something, because we, if we have to give them ninety days' notice, we know we can give them ninety days' notice at any meeting. We just add it and we give them the ninety days' notice and they. Get their stuff out of there and we say, what are we going to do with this now? So I, I, I'd be, I would be open to that personally, but I don't speak for the five of us here.
But this goes, we're going back to, there was a motion to, um, terminate the lease. Then there's another potential motion. It's a discussion at this point. Well, so, so we have to figure out, yes, it is discussion. So we have to figure out what we want to do with this barn, because now we have one motion on, on the table to terminate the lease. We have another saying, could we negotiate or find, find out what? Is a po- potential to lease? So we need to figure out what we want to do.
One motion on the table. Now, I will say, if the board, uh, would feel more comfortable having all seven members, uh, making this decision, I would remove my motion. Any comments on that?
Yeah, I would. I'd be, I think that would be good. Um, the question I'd ask this board is if, if, uh, we could. Charge our project manager with entering into discussions to see if, uh, a, a different arrangement could be entered into, no guarantees. But, uh, i- if that's something that with this. This board would be open.
That's what I would like to see.
Okay, I will remove my motion, and I will make another motion to table this until the next meeting.
Does that give you enough time, Chris?
I'm sure I can get, get hold of the friends and. Start acquiring what they, their market value for them.
I will put.
No, not for them, I'm sorry, but for the township.
For the township, correct.
I will put this on the record that with our sixty days is today. The way I read the agreement, unless, unless somebody's read this differently.
Right, but that's only if we terminate the contract or have that potential.
Well, no, then it's a renewal for twelve months, is it not?
Uh, on a written request from the, from the tenant to the landlord, which we've received a request, correct?
So, can you?
Have you received a request from the Friends to renew? Oh, okay.
Yeah, so they, they have not requested to renew.
But have they ever? Is it just always kind of renewed without anybody saying anything, and that's just kind of how it is?
They did, in the past.
In twenty twenty, this was signed by both the supervisor in office and the president of the Friends Organization on the last page, so.
In the last four years, have there been unkillious renewals, or is it just kind of continued on? I don't know. Tendency by sufferance or whatever, um, is, as is.
Also, too, if, if that's the route the board is going to go and wants to go, they're also then going to have to revisit the roof.
Right.
My motion is just to get the board off the mark to at least take one path or the other.
Right.
In other words, we've been talking about it for long enough.
That's what we're supposed to do tonight, and it's in this motion to, in the original motion.
I removed my motion from the floor.
No, the model motion that's in the agenda packet.
And we're not considering that yet. That model motion has not been made.
You just said that we have some decisions to make about keeping it, keeping it or whatever, and that's exactly what the, the model motion.
Are you making that model motion?
It was presented to us by our project manager.
And the, and a board mi- member needs to make a motion.
And which you did.
I rescinded my.
Okay, and then we're on to the next one.
The next what?
Potential motion?
Someone would need to make this model motion. It's not made just because it's.
Okay, I will make the model motion to approve the Sial Barn as a storage facility for Sial Township Departments with site upgrades to ensure ingress egress compliance. Or to start the process of selling the barn to the public. Is there a second?
It's not a single action. I don't think it's a reasonable motion. It's one or the other.
Point of order, it dies for like a second. I guess, one of, one of the. Even though there's no motion on the floor, I'm concerned with if we are going to terminate it, we terminate it, we terminate it by the terms of the lease, and then we don't miss a deadline for doing so. So, so I guess, I, I, I don't want to, like, all of a sudden mistakenly enter into a one-year contract for the, for the barn when we didn't, we, we weren't coalesced around that approach.
Well, I, I might suggest that we make a motion today to not, um, miss the deadline. Um, it doesn't, that does not preclude further negotiations.
I agree, we can all just re-lease it in the future.
Does it mean, yes, it's, you're not automatically renewing this lease.
So are you moving their attorney be directed to terminate the terms of this lease with the Friends of the Sial Barn? And then we can go forward as we do, renewing it or coming up with something new, like to terminate at least this lease, so we've given notice?
Do we have to do that? We don't have to do that either, do we? Yeah, it's so long as no default has occurred, this lease shall re- renew for consecutive additional periods of twelve months.
That's what I'm concerned.
Upon a written request of the tenant, so they've not requested it. They needed to request it ninety days prior to the expiration, which is the end of May. And it does say, failure to request this renewal shall terminate this lease. So, in effect, I think that they've already terminated it.
Okay.
Um, it wouldn't, it wouldn't hurt, though, for the township to send them a notice saying. You've not requested renewal. We're assuming that this is termination, and under the lease, we're also giving you our sixty days' notice that we are not renewing this lease.
You need board action directing a township attorney to inform the tenant of the termination of the lease and.
Always helpful.
Okay. All right, you want to do that, then you know me.
Uh, you, you can do it, John. You're, you're anxious.
Uh, no, I'm just chilling over here. Uh, but I would move that, uh, the, uh. By our township board of trustees, direct a township attorney to. Inform the Friends of the Sial Barn that the lease has been terminated. Um, and that they are to, um, vacate the property in terms pursuant to the terms of the lease. And I'm open to friendly amendments, that we.
Friendly amendment, they have, is terminated by default.
Yep.
Yeah. I. Their default.
Their default.
I mean.
It leaves the door slightly open.
Well, I think. Just because a lease is terminated doesn't mean I know it can't be done in the future, but that's, we worry about that, then.
Yep.
Yeah.
And there was support by Yaple?
Yes.
Did you get that?
Motion by riser, second by Yaple.
Could you read the motion?
I'll try. That the Sial Township Board directs the attorney to inform the, is it Friends of Sial?
Um, Sial.
Is it? What is her name?
I thought it was Friends of Sial Barn. I want to get it right. Friends of Sial Barn, Sial Township Barn.
That the lease has been terminated by their default, and they are to vacate the premises.
Pursuant to the terms of the lease. That, I'll leave the details up to council.
Okay. Motion riser, second Yaple. Sial Township Board of Trustees directs the attorney to inform Friends of Sial Barn that the lease has been terminated by their default, and they are to vacate the premises pursuant to the terms of the lease.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, you have, um, second by Yaple?
Yes, okay. Riser Yaple?
Riser Yaple, um, and then roll call vote, please.
This is the, the final discussion. Even though I'm going to vote for this, I'm open to a new lease if that's what this board wants to do.
Well, we've made one decision tonight. Let's stick with that, and then we'll move forward later on.
Yeah, I mean, in the future.
Roll call vote, trustee Noel?
Yes.
Reed absent, riser?
Yes.
Supervisor Carey?
Yes.
Treasury Yaple?
Yes.
Lintop absent. Trustee Brand?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you.
And Chris, before you go, I would think that I've been to the property, um, they should be able to drive around the barn. They should be able to make that work, I'm thinking.
Okay.
Instead of having a turnaround on the one side.
Compact driveway or, you know, I don't know if it's.
Yeah.
They may get to improve it just to make sure that it's safe.
Should be able to move the, uh, ingress further north on way.
There's, I think there's a fence out there, too. We may have to.
Fence is movable.
There's, there's. Be some work if that's the direction we're going.
There's flooding issues there, too.
So, all right.
Excuse me, Mike, but there's a gentleman to your left. Was he part of this presentation?
Not for the barn. No, this is Noah. He's with Phoenix Contractors.
Um, yeah, we had, uh, just submitted one of the proposals for the fire station, so I just wanted to come and get an update on that, and then I know what the HVAC improvements.
Okay, all right, all right. We'll call you. We'll get to you when we get to you.
Oh, I'm just here to observe, so no, no worries.
I think just Noah wanted some company. He saw me, so.
I almost asked you, it was okay to sit up here and that, so. I'm used to sitting up on.
Yeah, exactly. I'm just.
Well, moving on to L three, project manager Chang, um, HVAC replacement update.
Okay, as some of you may recall, we met back in February twenty-fifth to discuss the HVAC, uh, uh, costs associated with replacement, and it came in at around one point eight million dollars. So at that meeting, there was a discussion and a motion that was approved to, uh, value engineer the geothermal, uh, HVAC system. Uh, there was a letter of intent for approximately thirty thousand dollars to, uh, see if we can't get this cost lower than the one point eight five million dollars, somewhere around there. Uh, I've had discussions with, uh, both Jen Culberson and Jeff Dar, who, Christie, hopefully, they're online, so they'll be available to us also if there's more specific HVAC questions. But in, in, you know, in brief, uh, we did discuss how we can value engineer, and the savings included eliminating the state tax. That one was kind of presented at the last one, so. That was a bit of savings. Uh, we're going to start using some existing ducts in the township hall. Uh, we did an adjustment in the asphalt and concrete repairing of the geothermals that will be out at, uh, in the parking lot right here, so that would be kind of the northwest portion of the parking lot. Um, we also looked at, uh, um, uh, heat exchanges. We are going to keep, continue to use some of the existing heat exchanges in here. Uh, reduction of structural steel. We're not going to need that, uh, on the roof any longer since we found room that, uh, we can do that out in the mechanical area. And we also eliminated the, yeah, the rooftop units, uh, let's see, and we, and for Boon and Dar, they reduced their contingency from ten percent to seven and a half percent. Uh, we also did, uh, we're going to start, we're, we're going to have to add a little bit of expense. We're going to clean the ducts instead of replacing the ducts. And we also, let's see, oh, we, we did explore different areas to, to move that geo field around Township Hall. But again, after a, a second look, the most efficient and least costly is going to be out in our parking lot. It's going to lead to our, one of our bathrooms are. Where Noah can properly answer some questions, because we had him change the south bathroom to the north bathroom, because they've got to go through the north bathroom for our mechanical room for the geothermal. Uh, it's just more efficient instead of trying to cut, cut into the north bathroom, so. That, I don't want to confuse it. The north bathroom is going to be for Township Hall Park. So we're going to have to coordinate between the geothermal, when they're out there working on it, and renovating our north bathroom that's out there. Um, so I see some confused looks. Is there a question?
Yeah, um, Phoenix is doing what?
Our bathroom. They're, they're doing the bathroom. They're finishing the Township Hall north bathroom. That will be utilized by the north, by the Township Hall Park.
Okay, that was part because of the, the renovation before, and Phoenix was part of that renovation.
Well, they're part of the renovation, but because we are now moving the geothermal field that's out in the parking lot. We had originally thought it was going to be in the south bathroom, but after further discussion and expense. It's, we're going to, we're going to use that south bathroom as the mechanical room for the geothermal. And we've just, because they're mirror images, these two bathroom areas are mirror, we just changed the permit to do, we're going to finish the north bathroom instead of the south and use the south bathroom for the mechanical room for geothermal.
I understand that, but how did Phoenix?
So, Noah, to clarify one thing, you're not a sub to Boon and Dar, correct?
No, no, I'm not, uh, part of the HVAC renovations.
Yeah.
Um, all we're doing is, uh, finishing out one of the bathrooms.
Yeah, that's your scope of things that aren't in this price. They were in a separate item we previously approved. He, he just happens to be here because he.
He's here for the fire.
Okay, that's what, like.
He just happens to be here because he's going to be our friend. Exactly, I apologize.
Okay.
Yeah.
And, uh.
Too many projects going on, you know?
Yeah, there are. There's a lot going on with Tom to have, though, you know, we're happy to help out wherever we can, so.
Yep, awesome.
And so that got us down to, with one. And so that got us down to one point five seven million dollars, um, is, is from the value engineering. If you were to, you know, if you were to include the, the, the grants and the direct pay, and there's no guarantee on the direct pay of forty percent, you know, as we know with what's going on with, at the federal, uh, level. But that would take it down to approximately eight hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars. So, but depending on the direct pay.
So Chris, I have a question.
Yes.
There seems to be some. Sorry?
You may speak, go ahead.
Um, there seems to be some confusion in the public about, uh, this system versus a dual fuel system. And I know you, you got a quote on the dual fuel system, do you remember what it was? I think it was something like one point three.
It was something like that, but he also said, Jeff Dar is also online, said, that's a wild guess without me really looking into it. But there's also factors that, you know, you know, that, that, that wouldn't meet our twenty thirty sustainability goals, the geothermal would.
Right, but I'm, I'm just talking dollars.
That one isn't eligible for direct pay, this one is, so.
That's, that's what, that's my point, so, um, I think it was around one point three, let's say it's a valid quote. Um, this is one point five. Um, I think this is a responsible decision by the township to put this system in. If you're comparing apples to apples, it's incrementally lower for a gas heated natural gas system. Um, and we don't know if we're going to get the, the federal rebates, but I don't think we should change our, our direction to a natural gas system simply based on the uncertainty of that. So I, there's been numbers thrown around by the public that were not accurate. Uh, it's not one point eight, it's now, what did you, one point five. Um, I believe the other one was like one point three something. So we are in the ballpark for a much better system, which I believe has a longer life cycle, correct?
I would defer probably to Jan or, or Jeff, because I think Jeff may be able to give us a quote, whether it was one point three or one point one, it escapes me.
I think it was in the prior meeting on the twenty fifth I was looking for.
You know, and then I think Jan could also tell you probably the longevity of the system.
I, I have Jan, um. Jeff, do you want to speak to that?
Yeah, I can, I can say that, a, a geo field has a life of at least fifty years. Um, now, the individual components would not have a life of fifty years, but it's definitely that energy battery that you have. And there are systems out there that have been in existence for much longer than fifty years.
Awesome.
So Jan, on the face of it, would it be your estimation that the totality of the system, the geothermal thermal plus the, uh, fan coil, uh, would have a longer life cycle than the dual, dual fuel system?
Yes.
I think that's a valid consideration for the costs here.
It, it's also more efficient if you take into account total KBTUs used.
Anyone else? Mr. Riser? Treasurer April?
Say something real quick. So, couple of things real quick, thank you, uh, everyone for getting this list together as far as the project breakdown, this is super helpful. One thing I didn't see in the original quote, and I guess I have a question since we went through this with Noah and other people at bid for the fire station. Uh, line fourteen, the seven and a half percent project contingency, which is listed a hundred and nine thousand five thirty-five with this being GMP, do a hundred percent of the savings come back to the township? So if we use none or some or whatever of that, I, I didn't see it in the quote that was presented, but I could have missed it, it was several pages, so. I just didn't see it, if anybody can speak to that, I think the answer is yes, but it always, it always bears ask, it always bears asking.
Exactly, that's my understanding and some of the questions that came up, and I believe you asked it the other day, uh, trustee April was, well, what about permits? If it's not in here, the permits will come out of that contingency. So there are things in there that if we didn't calculate it, it comes out of the contingency.
And to answer your question, uh, I don't mean to speak for them, but on any of our proposals, if we have contingency line item, any unused goes directly back to you, Len.
Yeah.
I, I, this is Jeff Dar, if you guys can hear me.
Yep, we hear you, Jeff.
Yeah, I, I can confirm that as well.
Awesome.
Basically on the lot, on, on those fourteen items you're looking at, if any of those come under what they are, that, that, that helps your project. Um, and I, and I did put what I would consider a pretty stable conservative team together, so I'm very confident um, in those numbers and that we, we should be able to beat them.
Awesome. And Jeff, I guess the one other question I had for you, uh, you know, I was looking at one of your, uh, I guess contingencies, well, I guess, uh, concerns, I guess would be the better word. You're saying that equipment needs to be specified order approved by April fourth. I guess if we take action and move forward with you tonight, do you think that's still reasonable to order by April fourth and have the project wrapped up by the October third?
Yes, and actually, a, a, and actually I can adjust that because that, that particular schedule issue was associated with the rooftop unit. On the, on the original one, that is no longer part of the project, we switched to more fan coil units, so the lead times are better.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Trustee Riser, do you have anything?
No, I've been following along in this week, the weeks before, the months before, following it, um. I'm, I'm prepared to support the motion if there, if it's so.
John, we're always waiting for you to make.
Well, then I move that we approve revised HVAC replacement system for the fan coil geothermal system with Boon and Dar with a guaranteed maximum price not to exceed one point one million five hundred and seventy thousand dollars even.
I'd support.
Bethany Clerk, Leija, could you do a, roll call vote please?
Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Reed absent. Trustee Riser?
Yes.
Supervisor Carrie?
No.
Treasurer April?
Yes.
Lintoff absent, trustee Brand?
Yes.
Motion passes four to one.
Yeah, thank you, Chris, for your.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Put this Phoenix on, is that that?
Um, one of the interviewed firms, so.
So why don't you yield the table to him?
Yeah, absolutely, and my apologies. Being since when it was.
It's less confusing when you're not. And it's less confusing for the public. Evening Chief.
Hi, Chief.
How's everybody?
I'm good, we're doing great, it's only eight nineteen, this is awesome.
We're excited.
Let's see, so the board has authorized us approval of an architect earlier today in your consent agenda.
Yep.
Uh, today we're here for you to talk about and authorize us entering into an agreement for construction manager at risk for the fire station. Uh, so we did have, uh, several applicants, um, some of those applicants, uh, we didn't interview, um, they were excluded for various reasons. We did interview seven, uh, who submitted quotations or, or proposals to us. Uh, and the committee, uh, after a very difficult decision is recommending Cunningham Limp for the construction manager project. With that, I would love to answer any questions the board has, uh, additionally, and also talk about the process going forward.
Uh, trustee Riser, do you have any questions?
No, I.
Comments?
Yeah, thanks for getting it to us last minute, it really kept the suspense up of what it was going to be, but, uh, appreciate, you know, you're getting it to us, thank you. The, the name of the company.
Treasurer April?
Sure. Um, the chief and I and Alex Bade from O H M, uh, spent a lot of time with a lot of the applicants and as well as reviewing everybody's qualifications, their bids, uh, and determining ultimately who was best for the project based off of our different goals for the project, obviously, the, the chief is worried about construction timeline, cost, uh, ability to complete the project. Uh, but not just, not just cause, we're also worried about sustainability, we're worried about a lot of the other factors that are going to go into a building that's going to be in service for likely fifty, maybe even longer that years into the future when many of us, maybe all of us aren't here. Uh, so, uh, we, we met many times, uh, well, we sat with all the applicants and we had additional hours of discussion in order to come to our final agreement. And I do believe Cunningham Limp is going to be the best choice to move forward for the project. Um, I would say on the model motion, the one area I received a friendly amendment from, from our council earlier this week, uh, is at the end of the first sentence where it says to authorize chiefhood to negotiate terms and enter into on behalf of the township, an A I A agreement. There should be parentheses there, I didn't get a chance to add that, I didn't want to edit the, the packet.
Mm-hmm.
It said, that should say with amendments, close parentheses, with construction manager, with Cunningham Limp for construction manager's constructor, and then it would continue as written in the packet.
Can you read that again?
Sure.
Just with amendment.
I would get rid of the whole thing.
Yeah.
Got it, okay.
Yeah, I was going to make a motion.
Well, not yet. Besides, there's some, are you?
True, that, that was all I was going to add at this point in time, just to make sure it was, uh, known that that should be a, uh, amendment to this item.
Just a small amount of.
And the motion. A, attorney Fink, the other day in meeting, um, it was brought up something about ADA, attorney, um, Jim Fink had brought something about, uh, about ADA and including that in the motion, do you?
That, that would be, that would be the amendment that, uh, treasurer April stated, it's just expanding the A I A a bit, we don't have to be specific.
Oh, okay. All right, I misunderstood that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the other thing for chief, um, in M one motion, um, it states, um, the chief is further approved to amend the agreement at his discretion up to fifty thousand dollars, approximately ten percent of the proposed budget for additional services, so that's in M one, but it's not in M two, do we need that in M two?
No, I don't think so.
We don't, okay. I just wanted to make sure that that wasn't left out. Okay, that's all I have. Anyone else?
I move to authorize chiefhood to negotiate terms and enter into on behalf of the township, an A I A, A I A agreement print with amendments, close print, with Cunningham dash limp for construction manager or constructor services for the fire station number two project. The agreement shall be comprised of the general terms and conditions for the construction manager's role on the project and will also include the conditions of a guaranteed maximum price construction contract with a final value to be specified via subsequent amendments. The chief is further approved to authorize the C M to perform pre-construction services for the not to exceed fee of.
I'm grabbing that, give me just a second, sorry. Twenty-seven thousand six hundred dollars.
Twenty-seven thousand six hundred dollars. Pre-construction services shall include consultation,
Mm-hmm.
design during design bidding and the development of a guaranteed maximum price per run GMP close run for future submission to the board of trustees prior to the construction award. Acceptance of the agreement is subject to legal review and approval by the township attorney as well as acceptance by the township clerk and the township supervisor for execution.
Support.
Okay, um, I guess we can move on to a roll call vote.
Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Reed absent. Trustee Riser?
Yes.
Supervisor Carrie?
Yes.
Treasurer April?
Yes.
Lintoff absent, trustee Brand?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you, chief, uh, trustee Carrie had asked me, the gentleman that you talked to, you had started the meeting, was he one of the gentleman from Partners in Architecture?
Okay, supervisor.
I'm sorry, supervisor.
Trustee, yeah, I was wondering, because he was here and then he disappeared, so, yeah.
Thank you for all the work that you and the other committee members have done on this. I know it's a lot of work and I appreciate.
Yes.
Thank you.
Good night, thank you.
Good evening.
Good night.
And that's it, we're to public comment. This is the time for members of the public to speak up to five minutes on any matter under the purview of the board of trustees. Welcome.
Hello.
Good night.
Carol Thatcher, Sio Township President, I didn't expect to be speaking tonight, but I, two things. I want to congratulate the board on, things seem to be moving forward with many hands, I feel much more optimistic about it than I have previously. Thank you for working with them, please keep up the good work. Um, the other thing is the Sio Barn, I am not a member of the Friends of the Barn. However, I am a barn owner. In fact, I have two historic barns and two pole barns. So barns are dear to my heart. Um, I would comment monetarily, my biggest barn was roofed two years ago with the metal roofing and, um, it's a bigger and higher barn than that one. And, and I paid twenty-five thousand for it, which also included a chicken coop. Um, my, uh, big, one of my big, uh, pole barns was roofed last year. Same deal, the metal roofing, and I paid somewhere around fourteen thousand because there was something else lumped in. My point is, all the farmers use the Amish roofers, have you thought about the Amish roofers? They do a good job, they get in there and get it done, and I don't think they charge the same as some of the folks you're talking to. So.
If you have the contact information, we'd love to hear.
Yeah, yeah. I, I had two different people do the two different barns, so I've got at least two contacts. Um, my second point is, depending upon what you ultimately do with the property, you decide to sell it, I'm going to bet that somebody is not going to want that barn. Just because, just because. So I would urge you that if it appears as though you or someone else doesn't want to keep that barn, that you don't just tear it down. There are people who would, who move barns and put them back up and are delighted to get an old barn like that. I'm a member of the Michigan Barn Preservation Network. That barn was featured on their calendar in twenty twenty-four. Um, they have, you know, they know who to contact, uh, who would move a barn, so please, don't just tear it down.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Get her name.
I got it. Anyone else in present would like to speak? No?
Okay, online, first up, we have Rob Pattinson, second up, Mary readings, go ahead, Rob, please.
Thank you. Um, with regard to the barn, who is going to, um, decide fair market value for renting the barn for Chris Chang's, um, negotiations with the Friends of the Barn? I, I think this board needs to establish that before Chris goes off to make his inquiry so that he has a starting place to, to work with, and it's not dictated by the, um, Friends of the Barn. Um, on the HVAC system, I'm very disappointed that this board did not put together or ask for. did not put together or ask for information on what a regular furnace would cost. Yes, it doesn't meet twenty thirty sustainability costs, but it could also very well be five times cheaper. The fact that, uh, you just went forward with one point five seven million, um, does not make a lot of sense. I don't think it's very fiscally responsible. And I will note that, um, Jeff Dar said they're going to use the, reuse the heat exchangers. And it was the heat exchangers that failed this winter on, on one of the furnaces. And that's why replacing the furnace is an issue. So the heat exchangers are twenty years old and you're going to base a one point five million dollar project on, uh, old heat exchangers, one of the three of which has already failed. So I think you need to reconsider that. And I wish this board had, had, uh, done the work needed to demonstrate that, uh, the luxury of a geothermal system, uh, was far too expensive. And if you had, I wish you had, um, investigated, uh, cheaper alternatives. I don't think one point five seven million is a bargain for township residents.
Thank you, Rob. Uh, the next up is Mary Readings. Go ahead, Mary, please.
Uh, sorry about that. That's Elia's in another venue. This is Mary Gillis.
Oh, sorry, Mary Gillis.
No, it's me.
And I know. Go ahead, please.
Okay, uh, I just wanted to briefly thank you so much for approving the new HVAC system. Uh, I've worked in Township Hall for six years and the HVAC system has always been a problem. It, it's obviously been, um, uh, used well, well passed its, um, life cycle and previous boards were unwilling to take the brave move that you just did, to spend a lot of money to improve the air quality in Township Hall for the employees. That matters every day. People spend eight to ten hours there every day. It affects their health. Um, we can now look forward to reliable heat and air conditioning. And, and I really appreciate the move toward to support sustainable goals, the goals for sustainability. Um, uh, that's a stated goal of this board and, uh, of this township. And the only way to get there is to actually make decisions that support it. Um, as I recall, the, uh, data that came in earlier, uh, on the, uh, the options, the, um, conventional HVAC system was not significantly, uh, not a significant saving. And my experience of driving an electric vehicle is that, uh, the, the sustainable options are just so much cheaper to maintain that you get savings every year in using them. I spoke way longer than I meant to. Thank you so much for approving.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you, Mary.
Hey, is there anyone else online that wishes to speak, that public comment? Could you raise your zoom hands? At this time, I see no hands raised.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
No, I'd like to address public comments, please.
You may.
So I, I, I want to make it perfectly clear. I tried to do that in my discussions on this topic with Chris Chang. Uh, conventional systems were evaluated. You may recall there were five options. Uh, they were narrowed down to a, a few. But when the actual bid for the geothermal came in, there was another effort to go and look at dual fuel conventional systems. The difference in price is not appreciable. When you consider the life cycle and the utility cost per month for the units, um, this is a valid and fiscally responsible decision. And thank you, Mary Gillis, for the newsletter. Um, I meant to say that earlier. It looks great and appreciate your work on that.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
So I move.
To support? Oh, wait a minute. Yeah.
Support? Eight thirty-five?
Just a point of information. I don't know if Rob forgot to put his hand down or if he wants another bite at the apple. I just want to point it out. Oh, Paula, go, Paula, Paula, maybe that's Paula's hand, right?
Well, now, yeah, Rob had his hand up.
Okay, Rob, Rob's hand is down, but Paula's hand is up.
Paula, do you want to speak?
Yes, I do. And actually, it's about in correspondence. And I want to very much appreciate Kathy Noe with the, uh, getting, well, she's been involved with the dioxane plume. Not making, spending hours and hours. I know she has. So I'm very happy. The only thing that I suggest about the PFAS meeting is somehow we had it. So, you know, not everybody checks the agenda, but get the information out. And I wonder if Lowdy Township, I, I can't assume that they're involved with it, but I think, you know, looking at uh, Dan Bicknell's letter when Thornton Farms was mentioned to. So that's just, I just don't assume anything, but I want to be very thankful of that. And I also want to appreciate the people that worked on the many hands. Because we, we're following our ordinance and that is wonderful and getting everything together. I appreciate that so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Paula.
Thanks, Paula.
Anyone else online that wishes to speak? Back to no hands raised.
Move again to adjourn?
Okay.
Or again?
And?
Eight thirty-seven.
Eight thirty-seven. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Then motion passes.
Whoa. Are you?
That's a record.
It's this new format.